Twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Kathy, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Inga Brethson.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Here.
Councilmember Zabel.
Here.
Mayor Rankin.
Here. Please join me now in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, in front of us, we have the agenda for tonight, and I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or, Chris, there's potential for an amendment?
There is. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'd ask that the, and I'd be added under Administrator's report, page two, at the end of the meeting, regarding lift station nine, we have two pumps that have failed, and fifty percent of our sewer flows through that lift station. So I'm, I have a request for council action, which I'll explain at the time, if you will allow it to be amended or added to the agenda.
So this will be discussed during your portion towards the end of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Counselors, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Then the motion passes, and the meeting agenda is amended. This will take place, then, during the city administrator's report. First up on the, on our amended agenda is the approval of minutes, and we've got two of them from two meetings. The first one was a workshop, City Council had, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and then we had the regular meeting, January eleventh, also. Upon review of the workshop meeting minutes, any counselors see anything that they want to question, or can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved as presented. Likewise, on the same day, January eleven, twenty twenty-two, Oakdale City Council had our regular meeting. Upon review of the meeting minutes, were there any corrections or adjustments? Could I have a motion, then, please?
No move.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved as presented, also. Thank you. Tonight, we have a couple of significant things. This is our public hearing night for our twenty twenty-two street improvement projects. So we're here tonight to consider the improvements and assessments for the twenty twenty-two street improvements. There's really two separate meetings. The first hearing, meeting hearings, the first hearing will review the street improvements, and then the second hearing will be to review the assessments and the other financing relating to the improvements. Notice of these hearings have been provided through mail and published in the city's official newspaper. I asked that City Clerk Kathy Lauer include the affidavit of publication of the hearing notices and the affidavit of mailing in the official record. Shortly, City Attorney Jim Thompson will provide important details relating to tonight's proceedings. Before we begin the hearings, I'd like to go over a few ground rules. First is one of the most obvious ones that we all are aware of and deal with, but we're going to treat each other respectfully and with courtesy. If you do wish to speak about either the street improvement project itself, or the second hearing, the assessment piece, please come to the podium, state your name and address. And our tradition has been that you limit your comments to about three minutes. If what you say is identical to the person right in front of you, I'd still like you to come up, state your name, address, and it's very acceptable to say, I support what Mr. or Miss or the person in front of me said. So unless there are any questions from the council at this time, Attorney Thompson will provide an outline of the procedures that we're going to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there's going to be two public hearings tonight. The first one is on the actual public improvement, and the issue that'll be discussed during that public hearing is whether to do the improvement, if you have any objections to the actual improvement itself, that would be your time to raise them. After that hearing is done, the mayor will then open a second hearing, which is the assessment hearing, which is the, your time to express your opinion on any proposed assessments on your property. I do want to emphasize that if you plan to appeal the assessment or challenge it, if the council were to adopt it tonight, you do need to file a written objection tonight before the hearing is closed. You can just file that with the city clerk. I think she might even have a form for it in the back, but it doesn't, it's not complicated. Just put your name and your address and say, I wish to appeal the proposed assessment on my property. So, but make sure you do that before the hearing is closed. And if you do do that, then if you decide to continue with your appeal, you need to file an action in court within thirty days after the council adopts the assessment. So there is a very short time period in which to file a court action to, to appeal the assessment.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. So I think we're all start, and so what we're going to do is the City Works, excuse me, the Public Works Director and City Engineer, Brian Bachmeier, will review the street improvement project. Brian will make the presentation. I'll invite people from the audience that want to comment on the street improvement portion of this deal to come up. After the comments are, have been completed, I'll close the hearing. Council will talk if there's questions or discussion, and then we're going to open up the next hearing for the assessment piece. If you speak at the first one, you're more than welcome to speak at the second one, too. So with that, Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Bachmeier.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and residents that were invited to tonight's assessment and improvement hearing meeting. One hundred and eighty-six notices were sent out for tonight's meeting. As indicated already several times, but I'll emphasize one more time, we are conducting two hearings tonight. The first is a public improvement hearing, where we'll talk about the improvements, really to address three questions, why, what, and when. And once we're completed with that, then we'll move into the assessment hearing, where we'll talk about how it'll be financed, and that's, involves the assessments to the affected property owners. Just, I just wanted to point out, there are four distinct neighborhoods that are, project areas that we're going to be looking at tonight. We did kind of lump them together because we find it to be efficient, and also, from a construction design standpoint, we're able to get competitive bids doing it that way as well. But there are four particular areas. One I'll just identify, it's Anna's Grove neighborhood. It's strictly a residential neighborhood just south of the railroad tracks, just off of Ideal Avenue. Single-family homes are in that area. I believe there's eighty-some properties in that area. Another part of our project this year is Forest Street, from Helmo Avenue to Imperial Avenue, and then also including Imperial, Oak Marsh Drive, and then also Third Street. Forest Street is kind of a mix of land uses. There is some vacant property that is currently zoned industrial office and could be rezoned, mixed use. There is also a townhome development on the north side, the country villas of Oak Run Shores. There is also a church, senior housing, development Oak Meadows, and then the retail area that's right on the corner of Inwood and Forest Street that involves Oakdale Village, and then to the north, several apartments, excuse me, hotels, event center, and then also the golf course. All told, it's about two miles of street area that we're going to be looking at. So just kind of zooming in a little bit closer, again, the first exhibit is the Anna's Grove area, so you can see Thirty-first Street, and then the four cul-de-sacs that come off of that. Single-family neighborhood developed in the mid nineteen nineties, so the streets in that area are about twenty-six years old, again, primarily residential. The bottom part of the exhibit is Forest Street, so from Helmo Avenue to Third Street, and then Third Street down to Inwood Avenue, and then Imperial Avenue and Oak Marsh off of Forest Street. So those are the improvement areas. The purpose of the public improvement hearing, again, is to identify why, what, and when, describe the improvements, give the residents, the property owners, an opportunity to testify about the proposed improvements, and then the decision goes back to the council, and it does require a four-fifths vote of the council because this project was initiated by the council. After we've completed that hearing, we'll then move into the assessment hearing. We'll, we'll focus on how, how the project is financed. Again, another opportunity to hear testimony, and then also goes back to the council for their final decision on the adoption of the assessment rule. Really, the objectives of our program primarily focus on three things: safety. There is a direct correlation between pavement conditions on the streets and safety of our people that use our streets, from people that drive on the streets with bicycles, cars, and then also people that may walk on the street. In particular, Anna's Grove, there's an absence of sidewalks, so pedestrians do use the street surface for their movement. Another component of safety is street lighting. We do enhance the lighting systems in those areas where it currently exists, and then install lighting where it currently does not exist. So that is part of our program, and, and we'll go into that in greater detail when we describe the improvements. The third safety item is, in regards to Forest Street, we are looking at widening that street to provide a left-turn lane down the middle. We, we know that people that are turning into the side streets, into the driveways, there is a concern with that, so we want to get them out of the through lanes and into a turning lane for that maneuver. The second objective of our program, and this is an annual program that we do every year, is to contain maintenance costs. We identify those neighborhoods where we are starting to see an increase, and it increases at a faster rate, increase in the maintenance costs, and patching is very inefficient. When we go out there, it's very expensive, and the end result is not usually attractive, and it usually doesn't last very long, so it's something that we have to do over and over again. So at some point, it reaches, reaches a point of diminishing returns, and so we want to schedule the replacement of those streets when it's appropriate to do so. The final objective is to make sure that our streets are of a condition so that they provide service to the abutting owners. As pavements get older, they become more brittle, and especially in residential areas, it gets to the point where we have to start imposing weight restrictions on those roadways, which could affect service to your properties, in particular, the spring of the year. If we're posting the streets at a lower tonnage and you're doing some work on your property, you may not be able to get materials or equipment to your home if there are weight restrictions in those areas, and we'll look at a map how that may affect the areas. Being an engineer, I do like to show some graphs, and this one I'll just share with you. Along the bottom is pavement age, starting at zero on the left side, and ten, twenty, thirty, and forty-year age. The scales going up on the left side is pavement condition, so you can imagine a brand-new street has a very high rating. We generally rates streets on a scale of zero to a hundred, with one hundred being a, a brand-new street, and then as the street ages, that pavement condition drops down based on the amount of cracking, the severity of cracking, the type of cracking, and the maintenance that needs to be done on it. On the right side is rehab costs, so, and that's just kind of a reflective of, over time, we can spend more and more maintenance, and the result is the pavement conditions still go down. So, and for Oakdale, what we're finding is streets that get to be close to twenty-six to twenty-eight years old is right in this area. We're reaching a point of diminishing returns, where no matter how much we invest in maintenance, the conditions still deteriorate at an accelerating rate. So we do have this program where we identify those areas and generally reconstruct anywhere from two to four miles a year of streets to maintain the balance in our community. This is just a map of our community. There's, it's about twelve square miles. We have about a hundred miles of local roadways, and just on that scale that I was talking about before, on the low end, from one up to thirty is very poor streets, so you can kind of get a sense of where some of those areas are, where we have some poor pavement conditions in our community. And just to note here again is Anna's Grove, and then also Forest Street is down in this area. We also have some other areas that you'll see that are in our program going forward. Then also, streets that are thirty to forty, what their pavement condition is, they are out in their community as well. We have some up in this area on the north part of the community. We also have streets that are adequate and good, and so you can see the areas of our community where at this point the pavement is still adequate or good. And generally, those areas that are, you know, ten years or less in age since they've been reconstructed are fifteen years. This is a map indicating where we, we do patching in our community, and this was for the year twenty twenty. We have different colors to indicate the severity of maintenance that we were doing in the area, and so you can see neighborhoods where we have different colors where we've been doing the maintenance. And again, so you see it in these kind of pocket areas and where we're spending more and more of our maintenance dollars. As I mentioned earlier, just one more map, I'll share the load limit map. Again, when the streets get old and brittle, we have to start restricting the allowable loads in the spring of the year, and there are neighborhoods in Oakdale, including Anna's Grove, where we now are looking at posting the streets at five ton per axle, which may, may limit some service delivery in the spring of the year. So this is our program forecasted over the next five years, that we're going to be doing pavement improvement programs. Again, it's generally from two to four miles a year. So for twenty twenty-two, we are looking at the Anna's Grove and the Forest Street area. There are some other streets that are going to be included this year, but they're in partnership with either the county, or we're working with the developer up on Fortieth Street. There's also some work, we're going to be working jointly with the Gold Line BRT west of Helmo Avenue. So those are other projects that we're going to be doing as part of the twenty-two program. Twenty twenty-three, we're going to be doing some neighborhoods around the former Emission Campus, the forefront area, and also kind of tying in with Willowbrook, the development up there, and then also there's some work done just south of Stillwater Boulevard. And again, it's generally two to four miles a year, and so we have these areas over the next five years kind of programmed. This is a map that indicates all the streets that have been reconstructed or resurfaced under a similar program in the city of Oakdale since nineteen ninety-two to twenty twenty-one. I think it represents well over eighty percent of the streets in our community have gone through a, a similar resurfacing program to what we're talking about tonight. So again, this is just kind of focusing on the two neighborhoods. Tonight with me to kind of talk a little bit about the improvements themselves is Todd Blank. He is with the consulting firm of Short Elliott Hendrickson, S.E.H. They do the design work on a number of our projects and have for thirty years. They are, also, they do the project management out in the field. They have inspectors that are there working with the contractors to make sure that they are building it according to the, the plans and specifications that have been prepared. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Todd to kind of talk about the actual improvements.
Thank you, Brian. We'll start out with some pictures, some before and after pictures, just to kind of illustrate what we're trying to do with this project. And this is a picture of, of a neighborhood that we did four or five years ago, Holly Avenue. It was in twenty seventeen, I believe.
Right.
And similar to Anna's Grove, but this is a picture before the project was done, and you see the pavement that has kind of hit the end of its life. There's that expensive patching that Brian talked about, severe cracking. We can't really come in and just grind off the top layer and put more on. Those cracks will come right back through. The curb is in relatively good shape, but holding water in some spots, and the street light didn't really meet current standards. And then next is this same area after the project. So this is what we're trying to accomplish. So the pavement in between the curbs has been replaced, so brand-new street pavement, asphalt pavement. There has been some curb patching around a couple of the catch basins where there was either a drainage issue, or we had to work on those structures, and also by one of the driveways. And then the streets were, the streetlights were updated to the city's standard residential streetlight. So that's really what we're trying to accomplish. And then next, we'll go through some pictures of the project area, starting up in Anna's Grove. This first picture is on Thirty-first Street Circle looking to the north, and again, that inefficient and expensive patching and pretty severe cracking of the pavements below the curb and gutter, so the water's really not even getting off of the street in some areas. Thirty-first Street Plaza, looking to the west, very similar, severe cracking. You can see the pavement settled below the curb. Thirty-first Street Place, looking to the east, very similar patching, cracks. You can just barely see on the right-hand side down in the cul-de-sac the existing lights in Anna's Grove, and they do meet the current standards with the decorative concrete poles with the acorn fixture, but they are the older incandescent type lights. And then on Forest Street, Forest Street was actually a former Mindot Highway that was given back to the city many years ago, and it, it doesn't really fit the urban. And it doesn't really fit the urban character and the amount of development that's going to happen down there. The street has really seen its life. It was overlaid at the point of turning it back to the city, but the pavement is pretty much at the end of its life. There is a paved trail on the north side of the road by the golf course. There's no street lighting system except at the intersections. Imperial Avenue, newer section of street, the curb is in relatively good shape. The pavement, again, is near the end of its life. You'll see some patching and some settlements off to the entrance on the left-hand side. And then those streetlights do not meet the current standards. Those are older steel poles, incandescent poles, and those are proposed to be replaced. So the proposed improvements, then, they're a little bit different in each project area, but essentially what we just went through. So in Anna's Grove, we'll be rehabilitating that pavement, replacing the pavement in between the curb and gutter. The streetlights, they do meet current standards, but we'll be looking to upgrade those with LED components in the fixtures. We want to take care of everything that we need to underneath the street before we put that new pavement back down. So Public Works is running cameras through the sewer lines to identify if there's any areas that have to be dug up. But there's sometimes some areas that can be maybe just sealed from the inside of the pipe with remote equipment. There are some fire hydrants and gate valves that will need some adjustment and probably some repairs. We've gone through all of the storm sewer structures. Some of those need to be repaired. We've heard of a couple concerns of some flooding during heavier events, so we might be adding another catch basin or two in that area. And then we'll be cleaning out the storm sewer aprons at the ponds where the sediment has deposited and make sure that that's all cleaned out with this project. And lastly, we'll go through the street signs and bring those up to standards if they need to be. Fourth Street is a little bit different. As Brian said, we'd like to widen that and get a left turn lane down the center. There'd be new curb and gutter on each side, a new storm sewer system, a new street lighting system, and then the trail pavement would be resurfaced and replaced. Imperial Avenue and Oakmarsh Drive is similar to Anna's Grove, where the curb and gutter is in relatively good shape. So we'll be replacing the pavement in between the curb and gutter, doing some spot repairs if necessary on that curb and gutter. There are two former cul-de-sacs in there that are no longer necessary, so we will be trimming those off and making that one through-street section. And then those streetlights in that area will be replaced with the city's standard for commercial areas and collector streets. And that's shown in this picture. It's a little bit taller, and it has a decorative pendant on it. And then lastly, Third Street is proposed to be milled and overlaid. So the top two inches would be ground off, and then a new asphalt surface put down. So what can you expect to see during the project? First of all, the contractor will come in and they'll reclaim the existing asphalt pavement. So they'll grind it up and mix it with the gravel, and then they'll have a gravel material that they can recycle and use on the project. Up in the Anna's Grove area and Imperial and Oakmarsh Drive, they'll be removing the top four inches of gravel and prepping that for the new asphalt pavement. And on Fourth Street itself, there'll be much more involved grading. So Fourth Street, it'll be a longer grading process, digging that out, putting some good sand in and widening that out for the turn lanes and curb and gutter. In the neighborhoods with existing curb, we'll be repairing some of that curb as necessary. On Fourth Street, it'll be a new curb system. And then, again, we want to take care of any of the city pipes underground, the sanitary sewer, the water main, and the storm sewer before we put that new pavement down. Fourth Street will have a brand-new storm sewer system. But we're also coordinating with the private utilities, so the gas, electric, and telecom facilities. We've been in contact with them. Some of them might be upgrading some of their lines in the area along with the project. And then we will install the first layer of asphalt. And so we try to minimize the time from the time that the street is ground up in the gravel to the time that that first layer of asphalt paving goes down. And in Anna's Grove and Imperial and Oakmarsh Drive, that'll be about a three- to four-week period. So we don't tell the contractor what order they need to do it in, but we say, hey, you need to split the project in smaller pieces so that you're not having that open for a longer period of disruption. So we're looking at three to four weeks of that gravel road period. Fourth Street will be a much longer process. They'll probably have to be a detour. We'll keep that open for the local traffic. After that first layer of asphalt is placed, the manhole castings and gate valves will be raised to their final elevation. The disturbed Boulevard areas can be restored with topsoil and sod. And then the final paving will be one of the last things that is done. And during construction, we will be requiring the contractor to maintain access to the project area. Fourth Street, as I said, will be more involved and probably a detour setup with local access. Contractor will have to have a plan to keep drive accesses open to those properties in those construction limits. And up in Anna's Grove and on Oakmarsh Drive and Imperial Avenue, that will be pretty much passable as a gravel road. If there's a piece of curb right in front of a driveway that has to be replaced, that's about a one-week period, and the contractor would give notice with additional parking arrangements during that time. But otherwise, access should be maintained. Mail delivery service should be maintained. We will have a representative out on the site to be a resource to the property owners and also make sure that the contractor builds things properly. And then the city does have standard working hours. It's 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 on Saturdays, unless it's an emergency. Next are just some more pictures of the project area. I think that we've covered this. This is the Anna's Grove area. It shows the existing streetlight locations. Those will not change. Down on Fourth Street, you can see the trail dashed on the north side of the road. There'll be a new street lighting system and new storm sewer system. Third Street down on the bottom, that's the mill and overlay, just the top two inches of that surface. And then Imperial Avenue and Oakmarsh Drive is similar to Anna's Grove. Those streetlight locations will remain in the same place. There's concrete bases that we're planning on reusing and just switching out the lights on top of those. This is a cross-sectional view of Fourth Street, and it shows a little bit better what we were trying to explain. And so north is to the left, and the trail is on that left side. We need to keep a little depression in there. It won't be the ditch like it is now, but we have to do some stormwater treatment, and that seems to be the best area for that. Otherwise, there will be about a 42-foot-wide street with new curb and gutter, center-left turn lane, and then we'll be filling in that ditch on the south side of the road. So with the process and the schedule, we did share information with the public. We presented the feasibility report to the council in December, and we're here tonight at the hearings. If the council proceeds with the project tonight, we would prepare the construction plans and bring those back for review and approval in March. We would be able to open bids and award a contract then in April. And then we really want to have a contractor onboard by the beginning of May, when the frost is out of the ground and then they can start working on the project. And again, it will be phased in sections, but we plan to be done with most of the construction by the end of August, first of September, except for some final cleanup items.
All right. Thank you, Todd. So next steps, we've completed our presentation. It would be turn it back to the council so that they can hear testimony from the affected property owners. And then the council will pull the decision back to the council de s and make a decision on whether to order the project. So with that.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Todd. So I'm going to now invite the property owners who want to comment on the proposed improvements to please do so. Come up to the podium, state your name and address, and then share your thoughts. Again, this is just on the street improvement portion. So is there anybody that would like to comment? Good evening.
Hello. My name's Jim McMurty. I live at 5509 West 70th Street in Edina. My family, three of my children, myself, own Mentahou Catering and Events. We also own the building at 44 Inwood Avenue North in Oakdale. We operate a catering venue out of that location. I'm told I should have received a notice in December about the project and all. I did not receive such a notice. I can't tell you why I didn't. We have a number of venues. We have a number of licenses. We have a number of interactions with governmental entities, with property taxes and governmental financing and whatever else. We get notices, we respond to them, and I'm the one that responds to them. So if a notice came to our company, it would naturally have come to me. Whatever happened, I have no clue. And that's really a separate issue. We just did not get a notice. The project as proposed includes the improvements on Imperial and includes improvements on Oakmarsh. I've been at the venue many times since we've purchased it in 2018. And we bought it, we spent a ton of money improving it, getting rid of the pink exterior that had kind of become a little bit of a joke and whatever, and brought in new lighting and audiovisual and a ton of other upgrades. And we were busy, and we enjoyed being busy. We didn't use Imperial. We used Oakmarsh. Our employees come in on Oakmarsh, our guests come in on Oakmarsh. Imperial was just a non-factor for us. And the project as it is, the improvements on Imperial with us being assessed, and I'll deal with that in the assessment side of it, just is not feasible or reasonable in our opinion. And we don't think that it's, that the project should proceed it that way with us being considered a part of that segment of the project. And I appreciate that. I'll talk to you again on the assessment side of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on the project piece? Is there anybody else who would like to comment on the project piece? One last time, is there anybody else who would like to comment on the project improvement piece? So seeing none, I will now close the improvement hearing. Council, any questions from, that have been raised from Mr. McMurty or Mr. Blank or Mr. Bachmeier? Okay. So now I'm going to conduct the assessment hearing for the 2022 street improvements. Again, the staff will give a presentation and provide information.
Mr. Mayor, typically in the past.
You have a comment. State your name.
Typically, you've been, in the past, have loaded on the public improvement before going forward with the assessment hearing, so you can keep them separate.
Believe it or not, I was wondering about that too, with my little script here.
My mistake, I should have read your mind.
Okay, let me back up then. So, council, okay, let's do the resolution in second, if there's such a thing on the project improvements. So can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading of Resolution Number 2022, ordering City Project 2022-01, the 2022 street improvements. That's it. I don't have to read that last part.
No, right.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes as presented. So now I will conduct the assessment hearing. So we'll do the same process, the big presentation. Give a chance for the public to comment. We'll close the hearing. But before we close the hearing, is that piece that if you do want to make an appeal, you have to do it before we close the hearing. I'll watch for that. Eventually, we'll close. We'll bring it back up to council for discussion, and then we'll have a vote to move forward or not. So Brian, are you going to take the lead?
Yes, I'll just.
Or Jason?
I'll get it started, if I may, mayor. So similar to the previous hearing, the assessment hearing will do a quick presentation here. Things I want to touch base on is project financing, how this project is being financed. Also, the finance director, Jason Zimmerman, will talk about city local taxes, what we use our tax dollars for that we currently get, and define special assessments. And then, again, there'll be an opportunity to hear testimony from the affected property owners, and after which then the council would decide on the assessment role. Just talking about policies, if I may, assessments to the property owners. There is reconstruction and overlay, I want to make that distinction. On three of the project areas, it is considered reconstruction rehab. Just on Third Street, that is the mill and overlay, so I'll make that point when I get to it. But what our assessment to the property owners represents is the cost to remove and replace asphalt on a minimum standard street based on $2,002. And the question you may ask is, why do we use $2,002? And the reason we do that is that's 20 years ago, and we wanted to make sure that we do not assess more than 50% of the project cost, because project costs have increased generally 100% in the last 20 years. So by going back to 2002, 20 years ago, we have some assurance that when we do the calculation that we're not going to be assessing more than 50% of the project cost. In this particular case, we're actually, the proposed assessments represent about 20% of the actual project cost. So we're substantially below the 50%. The city will be paying for 80% of the project with a combination of funding sources, but the assessments themselves are really covering about 20% of the project cost. When you take that minimum standard and apply it to particular land uses, we come up with an assessment rate per foot, and that's based on the width of the lot. For residential property, primarily single-family and also the townhome development, based on a minimum standard street to service those areas in a typical neighborhood, it's about $52 a foot. And so in Anna's Grove, that zoning district, I believe, was R2. All the lots in that district met a minimum 80-foot lot with requirements. So taking the 80 feet times the 52 resulted in the, I think it was $4,160 assessment. The townhome development down on Fourth and Inwood, there, I want to say there was 400 feet of frontage along Fourth Street. There were 80 units in there, so we divided it. And so each unit, I think, got about 10 feet of frontage. So there must have been 800 feet of frontage, because it resulted in about 10 feet of frontage per townhome, times the $52 was $520. The $67 per foot for multifamily was really to Oak Meadows. So that's a rental multifamily development, so that assessment rate is a little bit higher than single-family residential. The commercial rate is $87 a foot, and that, again, is, commercial streets are, the minimum standard for a commercial street is generally wider and thicker, so the assessment result is more. And then Third Street, as Todd mentioned, that, we're not removing the pavement entirely and repaving it, we're just milling off the top two inches and putting down new pavement. And the reason for that is that street's about, I think it was 15 or 16 years old, and we were going to have to come back in five years to do something. And if you look at the map, there really isn't any opportunity to come back and do that one block. So we are doing that one block with this project as a mill and overlay. Total estimated cost of the project is $4,670,000. The assessments over the 186 properties, total $939,000, or about 20% of the project. The balance of the project is being financed with local funding sources, our share of the gas tax that we get, and then also other reserves that we have. And with that, I'll have Jason Zimmerman, our finance director, talk about what your city taxes pay for and why we do assessments.
Yeah. Thank you, Brian. So this slide here displays the allocation of 2022 estimated tax dollars collected on the median-valued residential property. So it's at $82.49 per month. And if you look, it's police, Public Works, the servicing of debt, fire, and then the more traditional administrative operations of the city are at the tail end of that allocation. So just a good depiction of where tax dollars are actually allocated to. So the definition of special assessments. So the loan is spread out over a 10-year period. It's policy that the interest rate is 2% above the city's rate at the time of bond sale, rounded to the nearest quarter percent. And the timing on that begins on October 15th. Prepayments are accepted without interest up to that date of October 15th. Partial payments are required, a minimum of $1,000. Partial payments are required a minimum of $500. And then the timing on when the actual collection occurs, if there's any balance left after that prepayment date comes, is with the May property taxes of the subsequent year. Payment at that point, and at any point in the project, can be made. And then also, the hardship deferral is available as well. And so this slide outlines the simple decreasing amortization schedule. So you'll notice that the annual principal amount is constant throughout while the interest amount decreases over time. So again, this depicts the 10-year schedule that's in the policy, and then those equal principal installments with the decreasing interest as well. And again, this is depicted at 4%. Again, it's important to note that the actual interest rate won't be determined until the time at which bonds are sold or issued. And then again, 2% over the city's rate, rounded to the nearest quarter percent. And with that, I'll turn that back over to Brian.
Just one additional slide that I have is, as I mentioned before, about 80% of the city has gone through a similar program as far as the street resurfacing, and same policies. The assessment rate itself has been adjusted generally about a dollar per year, and that represents the general, the inflationary increase, the CPI, in construction. So again, our assessment is based on construction costs from 2002, but it still increases every year. So there's about 9,000 parcels are, have been impacted by assessments. And just, there are about 11,000 properties in the city. So 9,000, we're at, you know, 90% of the properties have been assessed under similar practices. With that, I turn it back to the Counsel for an opportunity to hear any testimony from the affected property owners, and then for the Counsel to make a decision, and then on whether to adopt the assessment rule. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Jason. So I will now invite the property owners to comment on the proposed assessments. So anybody that's in the audience that would like to comment, again, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and then share your thoughts.
I knew I'd be back. My name's Jim McMurty, 5509 West 70th Street, Edina. Our property is 44 Inwood Avenue North in Oakdale. The building we own has streets on three sides of it. If I were a homeowner, I'd get a single assessment. We're subject to being assessed three different times because of the way the streets are designed around us. We don't think that's fair, we don't think that's reasonable. But that's what we're faced with. In particular, on the Imperial side, we really don't have value for that. We're just getting taxed $69,000 at a time that really isn't very advantageous for us. We're in the hospitality business. The venue at 44 Oakland Avenue, or Inwood Avenue North, is a corporate venue. Corporate business is off 80%. We've lost 80% of our business there in the last two years. Went from a very comfortable 2018 and 2019 to a very difficult 2020 and 2021. And then we get a tax bill that honestly doesn't make any sense to us. And it's created a hardship for us, and yes, we'll appeal for it, appeal it, but any consideration that the Counsel can give us would definitely be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to comment? Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to comment?
Thank you.
And lastly, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to comment? So seeing none, is there anybody else that wishes to appeal their assessments before I close the hearing? And seeing none, I will now close the assessment hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments to Brian, Jason, or anything else? My comment is that Mr. McMurty called me, I believe it was Thursday, possibly Wednesday, Thursday, and expressed that that was the first time that he had seen the assessment notification that raised a surprise because of the process that we use. So I asked Jim if he would either contact, or I think I asked you to contact City Administrator Volkers. So I think there was a conversation there. What else? My sense about it too is that the process and the policy that's in place right now is something that is very, very difficult to change tonight. So comments that you made, Mr. McMurty, you know, there's some validity to them, and I'm glad that you made your appeal. Counsel, anybody else? Can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading adopt resolution number 2022, adopting the assessment role for City Project 2022-01 in the amount of $939,481.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it.
The next item on our agenda is called open forum. Open forum is a chance for anybody that's in the audience that would like to comment on anything, is welcome to do so. The process we'd like to use is to have you come up to the podium, state your name and address, and then share your thought. It's not a chance for a lot of interaction with us, but it's a chance to hear what you are thinking. Is there anybody in the audience then that would like to comment? Is anybody in the audience that would like to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda are consensus motions. And tonight, we have four, A through D. Counselors, were there any that you would like to pull? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions, A through D is presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the consensus motions, A through D, are approved as presented. Next up is talking about the various boards we have, the advisory boards and the commissions. Economic Development Commission is first. There was no meeting, so unless the liaison wants to comment. Then the Environmental Management Commission, also, there was no meeting since last time we met, so unless that liaison wants to comment. Parks and Recreation Commission, there was no meeting, so if that liaison wants to comment. And then finally, the Tree Board, and I'm the liaison for that group, and there was a meeting. My notes are over there, so I'm going to wing it and apologize if I get it wrong. Two of the most important pieces is that Nick Cantola had been acting as chair for that commission in the past year, and he was renominated. So that's a very good move. Another very good move is Marge Sagstetter was acting as a vice chair in the past, and she was also renominated and accepted that role as vice chair for that Tree Board. The things that were then talked about were, is everything from naming of how we name our festivals or our events, like the, what's that, what's the, what's the tree writ, what's the?
Arbor Day.
And then what's the berry that we?
Oh.
Buckthorn?
Buckthorn.
So the buckthorn and how that's treated, I know. It'll happen to you too, young sir.
I just like the hand motion, like that signifies buckthorn?
But we talked about that. They also, very serious conversation about Jane Klein and being able to name an event after her, and is it a memorial? Is it a festival? Is it a variety of things? So that's going to have some more conversation. We also have the tree giveaway coming up, and the species that were chosen for that, for that activity, and how we're going to process it in the milder phase of COVID. But still with concern about that. And I think those are the high points. I'm going to move up to the next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission. And there are three things that we're going to talk about tonight, really four, yeah, three things we're going to talk about tonight. And Ms. Perdue is going to lead us through them. Good evening.
Hy-Vee for an aisles online sales kiosk at their current location. The request is a PUD amendment. And there are a few parts of the Tartan Crossing PUD ordinance that are being amended with this site plan. So first of all, with your action tonight, you would be approving the site plan for the kiosk. They are requesting to amend the PUD language to allow kiosk sales. Right now, it's listed as a prohibited use. Staff's review of that would seem that the use that they are proposing does meet the intent of the Tartan Crossing, just not the letter of what's in the ordinance. So that is one of the amendments that's being proposed. They are proposing to increase the number of drive-through lanes that is allowed in, at Tartan Crossing. Right now, there's a cap of five drive-through lanes with the addition of the four for the aisles online operation that would bring us up to eight. In reviewing that request, staff was supportive of it. The way that the new aisles online pickup is configured, it doesn't interfere with any of the pedestrian ways that are on the site right now. It doesn't create any new access points into the store. And so it's not creating any more issues for pedestrians, which is generally why we limit the number of drive-through lanes in a development like that. They are also requesting to remove the requirement for a bypass lane in this case. We've spoken with the Fire Chief on this. Given that there are four lanes proposed, the Fire Department didn't have any concern with not having a bypass lane there. And finally, they are requesting to remove 25 spaces from the original number of parking spaces required. In evaluating that, we looked at, you know, the fact that the drive-through operation for grocery pickup would ultimately reduce the number of cars that need to park there, people that need to come in the store, they would be driving through to get their groceries instead. And so staff found that parking deviation appropriate. The Planning Commission held a public hearing. We did not receive any comments at that public hearing. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the PUD amendment as requested. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Good, thank you, Erin. Counselors, you have nothing? I had one question, and it came really from the Director of Site Planning for Hy-Vee, Mr. Brim, or Brim? And his question in his letter was talking about what they plan on using this new building for really isn't a kiosk, but rather than a pickup structure. And was there conversation with the Planning Commission or, you're thinking about this, that if we remove the sales kiosk term, that that opens up to true sales kiosks, popping up in this development? And rather than removing sales kiosk, should we add something to allow Hy-Vee to do their planned work?
We did discuss that a little bit. I went back, so this is a PUD amendment that's been in the works for a while, back when your previous city planner was here. There had been some discussion between her and the Hy-Vee folks about how this new structure would be interpreted and what definition it would fit into in the ordinance. That determination was that it was a sales kiosk, which was not appropriate. And so we felt that this was the cleanest way to handle the situation. Given that the rest of the PUD is, it's pretty much built out. We don't see that the potential is there for more sales kiosks. If Hy-Vee wanted to put one in their parking lot, that would create more parking issues that, I mean, we would review that at the time, but I don't see that as being an issue moving forward.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselors? Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2022, approving the PUD amendment for Hy-Vee Aisles Online Sales Kiosk and Drive-Thru.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Thank you. Next up tonight is the forefront preliminary and final plat.
Yes. So as you'll recall, the forefront was before you in September with two site plans that you approved at that time, one for a one-building scenario and one for a two-building scenario in their west expansion area of their campus. One of the conditions of those site plan approvals is that they come back with a preliminary and final plat that reflected one or the other. And so the preliminary and final plat that's before you tonight is, reflects the one-building scenario site plan that you approved. A public hearing was held on January 6th at the Planning Commission level. Staff had some significant comments on how the plat was arranged, mainly relating to how the outlots would be maintained. There were some other comments related to easements on the site. The Planning Commission recommended that conditional approval of the plat requests, with the condition being that those comments be resolved between staff and the applicant before it came before you tonight. And so the applicant, since then, provided us with a new set of plans that did address the vast majority of the comments from staff. The only one that hasn't been resolved yet was how the outlots would be maintained in perpetuity. We had some concerns with them, you know, in the event of a tax default. They're all separate. What assurances would we have that the stormwater, the stormwater management on those sites would be maintained? We've discussed it internally and with the applicant, and we're requesting a conditional, a condition on the approval that says that there would be a development agreement that addresses that long-term maintenance that's created, executed, and recorded before the final plat is recorded or with the recording of the final plat. And so with that, we're prepared to recommend conditional approval of both the final, the preliminary and the final plats. And I believe the applicant is here tonight too, if you have any additional questions.
Very good, thank you, Erin. Counsel, anything for Erin? I do see the applicant, if you're, if you'd like to comment, that's great. Otherwise, it's kind of a cut and dried, but. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council members. Scott Peterson, representing United Properties, 651 Niklet Avenue Mall, on behalf of the joint venture partnership with the Larson family and United Properties. We reviewed the resolution in front of you. You know, we understand the five conditions that are put forth on it. You know, one thing that I guess we're looking for clarification on, and we're, you know, respectfully asking for clarification on item one, which to Erin's point is the development agreement addressing the long-term maintenance of these outlawed private roads. And just for a couple of reasons, you know, we're under the impression that, you know, the responsibility as a landowner of a recorded landowner is the same whether it's an outlawed or not an outlawed. You know, at the time of the plat being, right now, all that property is owned by the Larsons. At the time of the plat being recorded, all that property is owned by the Larsons. So to have management and maintenance agreements between the same entity seems a little tedious at this point in the project. You know, our intention is not to have these outlots in perpetuity, right? It's a master plan, so our goal is to come back with all these outlots at a future date and determine the best source and use. And we feel strongly that the city has certain mechanisms in place that require us to come back for an outlaw with a whole new site plan, a whole new, you know, stormwater management plan, et cetera. So we, our goal is not in perpetuity, and I understand that, you know, we'd need to plan for certain things in the future, but potentially anticipating, you know, foreclosure leans, I mean, I won't even go down that road. It just seems a little robust at this point. You know, to our knowledge, you know, existing, there's private roads already on that campus. There's existing outlots on the campus. There is no agreements in place right now. And I think, you know, this isn't a master plan that's raw land that we're trying to develop. This is a 500,000-square-foot Class A office space that's existing, that has people there, that's in good condition and good support. And so it's not a, it's not a risk of, you know, maintaining these sites when there's already an existing structure there in place. And then lastly, when it comes to a maintenance agreements on the outlots, all those outlots right now are currently sitting in leases for agricultural. And so they're farmed every year, and that's the condition that the Larsons intend to leave them in until we come back with another, another use of that outlaw. So just wanted to just voice our opinion on just understanding the clarifications that we would like to see as we move forward and proceed into a development agreement. Thank you.
So Scott, just to be sure that I understand, your request or suggestion is really around the development agreement piece, right? The other, the other four items is just routine?
That is correct, that's what we've agreed to previously. Thank you.
Counsel, anything for Mr. Peterson? Erin, any response or clarification?
Yeah, I think that the city's concern is the long- Yeah, I think that the city's concern is the long-term maintenance of those parcels, not necessarily just the private roads. And I think, you know, we would be working with the city attorney to figure out what exactly this agreement should have in it. I am certainly not an expert in that arena and what's appropriate. So I don't have any other response other than that, and I don't know if Jim or Brian has anything to add.
Let's find out.
Yeah.
I don't see the need for it personally, but I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I understand completely all the facts, but typically, cities are concerned about outlots going tax-forfeited because they're not developable, right? They're a little sliver or something like that that causes problems. I don't see that here, but I could be corrected on that. That doesn't mean you still shouldn't do it. I just want to make sure that I got the facts right on that.
There are a couple of lots that are, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, accessible only through other parcels, which was part of the concern. I don't think that there are slivers, you know, that kind of thing that we'd be concerned about. And there is, some of the outlots have some stormwater infrastructure on them that we would be concerned about, too.
I guess my question, whose obligation is it to maintain the stormwater? Is it the cities or the developers now?
Developers.
Okay. Well, we would certainly want to make sure that that obligation is continued.
Right, right.
So we would want to address that issue for sure, whether it's a developers agreement or something else.
Yeah.
That is a legitimate concern.
Brian, any thoughts? Any additional thoughts?
Well, the one comment I would make, there are three outlots that they're showing, and two of them are really not future development that I see. One of them is going to be a ponding area, water treatment area, so that's not going to be developed in the future. That's, needs to be maintained. The other parcel is adjacent, and actually, there's some of the existing parking lot of the Westerly Building comes onto that parcel, so I don't know how that lot could be developed with a, without being combined with the adjoining parcels, because I think just the dimensions and configuration of that parcel are such that it's, it can't be developed alone by itself. So, you know, the suggestion we made is combine all three outlots if you want to do future development, and they'd indicated no, they've got existing leases, so we understand that on the existing building, so understand that concern. But the other way to address it is through a maintenance agreement, some kind of association maintenance agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. City Administrator Volkers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I want to commend staff on the time they took to go through every one of those possible scenarios and really talk through this, the possible risk, not saying there is a risk, possible risk to the city, which is what our jobs are, is to inform you if there is some. And we feel pretty strongly that some kind of maintenance agreement needs to be addressed here for the reasons articulated by both city staff, all the people who worked on this, and the city attorney. So we do think the conditions are appropriate for that reason.
Counselors? Thoughts, questions? Need more information? Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2022 approving the preliminary and final plat as requested by Larson Family Real Estate, LLLP. Plans dated January 18th, 2022, with conditions as outlined in the resolution.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Erin, you have another one. Central Park CUP and IUP.
Yes, Central Bark.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes. Central Bark. This is a conditional use permit request for a dog daycare, which is considered a kennel per our ordinance, and then an interim use permit for the outdoor play area that would be associated with that dog daycare. Just to explain why we require an IUP along with a CUP, that is so, that outdoor play area is specifically tied to the doggy daycare that will be going in there. So if that daycare use goes away, the outdoor dog play area won't be allowed to stay there. A CUP generally goes with the land, whereas an IUP is tied to a specific user. So that's the reason for that. They are proposing to establish the use in an existing building, outbuilding in the Menards Lot. The outdoor play area would be directly behind the building, and it would be fenced in. And for those wondering how a paved area might serve as an outdoor play area, they're proposing some antimicrobial turf to be installed over the pavement. So that's how that would work. There are individual, I don't know the terminology of what you would call them, but individual play areas within the large area. And so we have conditions that outline how many dogs can be in each. They're going to have staff that staffs each one of the smaller play areas. There are a few other conditions that we've recommended that relate to the maintenance of the, of the outdoor play area, how barking or howling dogs are handled, that the supervision of dogs and the hours of operation. During the public hearing, which was held on January 6th, we did receive one written comment with concerns about potential noise. There was another resident who had questions about the noise, but also about the, there's an adjacent railroad track that goes by behind there, and wondering about that noise and the frequent train traffic and how that would interact with the dogs. The planning commission recommended approval of both the CUP and the IUP. And if you have questions about Central Bark, I know that they're here tonight, too, and they could better answer them than I can, I'm sure.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Erin before she stops?
I have some. Erin, so in the letter from the applicants, they noted that they'd be installing an eight-foot high fence, but our CUP is only requiring six foot. Can you talk to why there's that discrepancy?
Yeah, the CUP, the requirements that we have, four kennels specify a six-foot fence. They are proposing a taller one, which is great, but six foot is what our, the minimum that our ordinance requires.
Okay. And then the other question I had was regarding animal waste. So I know there were, there was language in there about removal of that, but my question centers on what is the drainage like for this site? Maybe it's a Brian question. If we have 48 dogs urinating and washing that off with a hose, where does that runoff go? Does it go into the sanitary sewer where it'll be treated, or does it go into the storm sewer and one of our stormwater holding ponds?
Well, if the applicant made any arrangements to address the outdoor drainage, in the absence of that, it's tied into the Mills Fleet Farm, or excuse me, Menards, I didn't mean to. Menards site, their drainage system, which is storm sewer.
Okay, so it's.
Surface drainage.
So it would end up in a stormwater pond?
Yeah.
Okay, so for me personally, that's a point of concern. And I, for me personally, I feel like that needs to be addressed. I mean, we're talking about up to 48 animals relieving themselves numerous times a day, five, six, seven days a week, going into our stormwater pond. That's a lot of contamination. And so I don't know what the process is to address that. I'm guessing possibly the watershed district might have some thoughts on that as well. They might want to weigh in on what we're putting into our wetlands. I don't know. I, yeah, I'll just leave it there.
And I, and Kevin, to your point, I don't, I'm not a scientist, don't understand the science, but it's always been my thought that putting that, you know, putting that little amount into a large amount of water, wouldn't it just dilute quickly and become...
A non-issue.
A non-issue, yeah. And very good question, though, Kevin, but I, because I know that there was a, there was a situation where a bunch of sewage was dumped into Lake Minnetonka, and it was tens of thousands of gallons, and a week later, people were swimming American.
I think the difference, though, is that was a one-time incident, where this is going to be an ongoing recurring.
That's fair.
Situation. And so I don't know how, how we navigate that. I mean, for me, I think it's enough concern to say, you know, maybe we need to dig a little bit more on this and understand the ecological impact of that waste. Ideally, it would be going into the sanitary sewer where it could be treated, but I don't even know how that would be possible.
Right.
So the concept is pretty cool. And then you just heard a couple of concerns, so go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Chris Holbrook. This is my wife Angie Holbrook. This is a franchise called Central Bark, and they have prescriptive methods to address all this. One is the antimicrobial turf. There's an enzyme solution that breaks down urine. To someone's point, the drainage of it, there's also underneath the turf, there's air vents that air it out.
It's like a drain tile.
Yeah, drain tile.
And, yeah.
And out of their three dozen, three dozen locations across the country, there haven't been any reported tainting of stormwater in their municipalities. So getting more information, you know, I don't know who to talk to about that at the city, like you said, watershed people, if there have been, there's just no reported pollution issues from doggy daycares in any instances. I think the dilution point is, is very valid.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
How does, how does that aeration with the drain tile work in winter? It's frozen. I mean, so there is no.
And they're not out there so much in the winter either. I mean, they go out a little bit, but it's a little bit different situation. I mean, if there's a lot of snow and, you know, they're just not going to be out there very often, you know?
There's a lot.
And they do pee and poop inside, too. And they have to clean up.
A lot of relieving of themselves inside that gets cleaned up and disposed of, you know, with, the way other pet companies do it with, you know, spray and towels, and there isn't runoff for half of their excretions.
Counselors, anything else? Erin, do you want to comment? Can you comment on the dilution issue or?
I can't really comment on it.
Yeah.
I don't know. You know, I have, I reviewed the files for other doggy daycares in the city, and this issue hadn't come up that I found in previous staff reports, so I don't know much about it, to be frank.
Thank you.
Do we think there might be somebody at MPCA that might be able to talk to this?
We can do some checking, yeah?
Sure, we'd be happy to.
Is it something my colleagues would entertain, holding off on action until we hear from MPCA? Or?
Possibly, can I, is there a time deadline that you're on or a timeline that's of critical?
Um.
Come on up again, I'm sorry.
That's right. What, for clarity, what is the main MPCA review?
The Pollution Control Agency. So it's the state agency that might have some scientific information regarding this that could point us to an answer.
We have 90 days from the day that we signed our lease to do all this, which was in December.
We did come to an 11-year old lease agreement with Menards. This is the old Dart escape building.
Yeah, right, right.
So, and I can't remember exactly when we signed the lease. It was sometime in December, I think. And so we have 90 days from that date to do all this stuff.
Yeah.
And then we'll come up with a commencement date for our lease, so.
Yeah, how long would the MPCA research take? And would it go another month or six weeks to another meeting to?
I would ask two weeks, and if we can't, if we either can't get an answer or they don't have data, we just move forward with it. But at least two weeks to look and check.
Until the next meeting.
Our next meeting, yeah. So.
Which is in two weeks.
Is in two weeks. And I would also, I mean, I just want to reassure you all that we want to address any concerns. We want to be good long-term business partners for the city. And that was, you know, the one, the one neighbor on the other side of the railroad tracks, you know, how do you just barking? You know, we have a whole care method for taking care of the dogs that handles that. And if there are issues with noises, you know, you have ordinances, you know, we know you'll approach us and we'll have to handle them. So, yeah, we welcome any suggestions or research on this. Like I said, in the franchise history, they haven't had any complaints or situations that you're asking about that we're aware of.
So can I make one more comment?
There is, oh, I'm sorry.
So I appreciate your willingness and commitment to being a good partner. And for me personally, you know, I have a one-and-a-half-year-old beagle who goes to daycare once a week, and I live three blocks away, so I really want this to work.
Oh, good.
I just want to address those environmental questions. I don't even want to call them concerns, just so we're doing.
Good clarification.
So we're doing our new diligence.
And I will, as we pointed out to the planner, there's one other franchise of Central Bark in Minnesota in Rochester. He's been open for a year, two years?
Couple years, two years.
And there have been zero issues. And the actual, it's kind of counterintuitive that hard surfaces are actually more sanitary for this than soft surfaces of dirt and grass. So I'm not a scientist either, but that's the system, and one of the reasons we signed on to a franchise, because they know all this stuff, and we don't want to have to try and figure it out from scratch and make a lot of mistakes along the way.
So I think you're going to find that it is a non-issue, but the question is really valid that Councilmember Zalbo brings up. Brian, are you the best to guide?
I'll work with Erin, well.
Or Erin? Without it getting into a, oh, you know, somebody saying, oh, I've never thought of this, let's go investigate. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about, just answer the question. And I think it's going to be a dilution resolution, but let's find out.
Mm-hmm.
So I think what we're talking about here is that we're going to table this to a date certain, two weeks from now at our next council meeting, which would be February 8th.
Yeah.
Eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And that, yeah, just to make sure everyone's aware, the 60-day deadline is February 13th, so the eighth would work to come back and consider this.
So it's a 60-day, not a 90-day?
I'm sorry, 60-day, yes, 60-day rule. They have a 90-day for.
They have a 90-day.
Yeah.
From you, 60, it's 90 from them.
Okay. Yeah, for their lease. Got it, got it, thank you.
Kevin, you were saying something?
No, no, I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
So can I have a motion, do we have a motion to table this thing to date?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the Central Bark CUP and IUP applications until February 8th, 2022.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes as presented. Coming back in two weeks and.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be interesting to see what you find out also.
Yeah.
So thank you, Erin. Thank you, Brian. So that, when you do come back, we'll concentrate on the conditional use permit and the interim use permit at all at the same time and make those motions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up on the agenda is staff reports. Brian, I think I'll start. Jim, city attorney, anything?
Nothing to report. I don't, yeah.
I think that takes care of that. Let's go to the administrator's report, and this is the inclusiveness of the agenda amendment dealing with the lift station repair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, we certainly can start with that. I have two items actually tonight. The first one is for lift station number nine. We have an emergency situation where there are four pumps there. Two of them will eventually have to be replaced, will probably add it to the 2023 capital improvement program, but two are emergencies right now and have failed and must be replaced. Hence why they weren't on the capital improvement plan this year. We were hoping to deal with them, or we weren't sure of the status and hoping to deal with them later. We will accept any responsibility, of course, for that. You know, we're somewhat aware, but they failed, so that happens. Two of them need to be replaced. As I said, we're, we did get two quotes. One was $67,000, one was $105,000. The current pumps are the make of the $105,000 pumps. However, after much research and discussing the options with the vendors, staff do believe that the $67,000 pumps are, will be just fine. And we, if we do go with those, the next two that we put on the capital improvement plan will also be those, so they would all be the same. So, but right now, we need an approval. I'm requesting an approval because of this emergency situation. 50% of our sewer business goes through those pumps, so they need to be replaced as soon as possible. We're asking for $67,000 to be transferred from the sewer, yeah, utility fund to the utility replacement fund so we can purchase them.
Okay.
That is my report, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Counselors, questions for Chris?
I have one.
Kevin.
Chris, so. Chris, so why not just replace all four now? I, I assume we would save maybe a little on labor. I can't imagine these pumps are going to get any cheaper, waiting an entire year. Is there an advantage to just doing four now?
I'm going to ask Jim Romanek to come up, our new public works manager. I will say we were a little nervous about coming with this request, so the, the thought of doubling it makes us even more nervous. But with that, Jim?
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, thank you. I appreciate the time. I, I think we'd be open to replacing all four pumps, because all four pumps currently are the same age, 15 years old, which typical lift station pumps have a seven to 10-year life cycle. These are 15 years old. They have about 25,000 hours on each pump, and as Administrator Volkers mentioned, 50% of the sewage in the city roughly flows through this lift station, so it's very critical to maintain this and to keep this up and running. And in this situation, at least two pumps to be replaced, but we'd be open to doing all four.
Would we get a deal if we did four? I mean, would they give us?
Sure, that's a good question. We could go back to the vendor and ask. There may be some ability to do that and, and shave, save on some of the, maybe on shipping costs as well, so.
How about adequacy of that fund for $134,000 bucks?
That, there is enough, that is fine.
Counselors, is there anything else?
Unless there's a reason not to.
Right.
Can't you just picture it, we'll get the two pumps in?
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, I agree with Kevin.
Yeah, it kind of makes sense to do them now.
Right.
Okay, counselors, is there anything else? Will somebody make a motion then?
Question for Chris, can we, since we don't, obviously don't have an amount, can we just approve an undisclosed amount as needed? You know, designate that it is the four pumps and make the necessary inter-fund transfers for the, for the amount?
Absolutely, knowing that we will try to get a discount for the four pumps, and we will do our best.
Yes, yes, I understand that.
Just on a practice, Kevin or counselor, would you be open to putting a top of, like say, 150?
That's fine.
We'll come in well underneath that, but just as a rule of thumb.
Yeah.
On our prudence, yeah.
Okay.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay? Can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to waiving adopt resolution number 2022 authorizing the purchase of four pumps from General Repair Service, home of pump for lift station nine, and initiate the inter-fund transfer of up to 150,000 from sewer utility fund to the utility replacement fund.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
As amended? Oh, as presented.
Yeah.
Let's see. Anything else? You said you had two comments or two items.
I do. I'm bringing, Mayor, City Council, I'm bringing back the, the Bus Rapid Transit discussion or agreement with Metro, on the Metro Gold Line with, with the state on that, that agreement that we talked about last time that you wanted some things removed. We have talked to, we've talked to, oh my gosh, who's the agreement with?
Council.
Sorry.
Met Council.
Met Council, I'm thinking of the other thing already, okay. Anyway, we talked to them, they did agree to remove recital six, amend recital seven and eight. However, it is really important to note that this is a master service agreement, and any sub, any action other than just agreeing to have the discussion would have to be done by a subordinate agreement. Any funding mechanisms would have to be done by a subordinate in agreement. So what we're asking for right now is, is with those changes, removing recital six, editing seven and eight to take out anything that says eminent domain, we're asking for your support. It really, in the essence, gives the city and the, and the Met Council joint power to work on this project together. And we, for the city, it's really the sewer situation, the sewer part of the project. And it gives the joint group, again, the right-of-way authority of which we legally already have. So that is what this agreement is, is before you, we do need approval soon. There is a deadline. We've already put it off once. If there's any further questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Chris? Can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator, mayor to sign the joint powers and construction agreement between the Metropolitan Council and the city of Oakdale.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, anything else?
No, thank you.
Counselors, this is the council presentation time, starting down with you, Councilmember Ingo Pritson.
I got nothing.
Councilmember Olson.
Nothing.
Councilmember Swedberg.
None for me, thank you.
Councilmember Zalbald.
Nothing for me?
And I'm going to say nothing also.